All right. Good evening. Welcome to the May 7, 2018, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I'll call the meeting to order. And please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
We the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to get started tonight with a few proclamations, so I'll come down there to the podium to read those off. We're starting with National Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, so if, I don't know if you all are coming up or just a couple of you? Come on up. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Read this one off. Whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of our city and state, and whereas the state of Oklahoma and the city of Stillwater are proud to be leaders in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, and whereas the membership of the Goldwing Road Riders Association, Chapter 10 of Stillwater continually promotes motorcycle safety and awareness through its motto, "Friends for Fun, Safety and Knowledge", and whereas all motorcycles and vehicle drivers should actively promote motorcycle awareness at all times through safety, education, and respect for the citizens of our city and state, and whereas roadway users should at all times unite in the safe sharing of the roadways within the city of Stillwater and throughout the state of Oklahoma. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, the mayor of the city of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 in the city of Stillwater as National Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, and acknowledge the GWRA Chapter, is it X? Chapter X of Stillwater for their continued leadership role in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Joyce, Vice Mayor Darlington, councilors, and citizens of Stillwater, we just want to say that there are close to 6 million motorcycles that's in the United States, and they're out on the road all the time, and most of us drive cars, and we want to make sure that everybody's aware of the motorcycles that's out there. We put safety first all the time, but we want to make sure that we in our cars watch out for them, so we appreciate that, and we thank you from Chapter X here in Stillwater. Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next proclamation is for Oklahoma Community Action Agency Month. Community Action Month, excuse me. Hello. Thank you all for being here. Whereas community action agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law, and whereas community action agencies have a 54-year history of promoting self-sufficiency for the limited income, and whereas community action agencies have made an essential contribution to individuals and families in Oklahoma by providing them with innovative and cost-effective programs, and whereas community action agencies are needed as major participants in the reform of the welfare system as we know it, and whereas welfare reform in Oklahoma has benefited from the state's partnership with community action agencies, and whereas the limited income continues to need opportunities to improve their lives and their living conditions, thus ensuring that all citizens are able to live in dignity, and whereas Oklahoma and the entire United States must continue to promote economic security by providing support and opportunities for all citizens in need of assistance. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, mayor of the city of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim Stillwater, Oklahoma in recognition, in Stillwater, Oklahoma, in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency, the month of May 2018, as Community Action Month. Thank you. Now on to Drinking Water Week. This is a diverse set of proclamations we have today. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, mayor of the city of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim May 6 through 12, 2018, as Drinking Water Week in the city of Stillwater, and urge our citizens to learn about services, programs, and opportunities that increase their appreciation for the value of drinking water. And now we're on to Building Safety Month. Mr. Crisp, there you are. That's it. How are you? This is a long one. It's all right. Whereas our city is committed to recognizing our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, and whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings, and whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that are developed by a national voluntary consensus, by national voluntary consensus codes and standards developing organization, our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation. These modern building codes include safeguards that protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquake, and whereas "building codes save lives" is the theme for Building Safety Month 2018, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2018 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, mayor of the city of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. I feel like the qualifications for mayor should have included a reading test at some point. Done a lot of reading the first three weeks. That takes us to item four, the Consent Docket. Counselors, anyone have questions or wish to remove an item from the Consent Docket?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item A, the Sherar Museum Quarterly Report.
Item A will be removed. Are there other questions, comments, or a motion regarding the Consent Docket?
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the Consent Docket minus item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket minus item A. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, the Consent Docket minus item A is approved. Takes us to item five. I don't think we have anyone signed up for items not scheduled for open hearing, so we'll move to item six. Items removed from the Consent Docket. Counselor Zanotti, would you like to address item A, the Sherar?
Sure. Well, I always, when our organizations do their quarterly reports, I always like to kind of remind them that we do read what they have written, and I just wanted to highlight a few things from the Stillwater History Museum at the Sherar. They're celebrating their 43rd year in existence, which I think is amazing, and they are currently seeking sponsors for their Cool Classic Summer Concert Series, which is in July, and this will be the 12th year that they've provided free concerts during the summer, so if anyone's interested in helping sponsor that, I'm sure you can contact the museum. Another thing they did this spring was they collaborated with the Oklahoma Wonderatorium to provide over 550 area third-grade elementary students from Stillwater, Perkins, and Drumright to do a thing on how Oklahoma began, and that's April 18 through May 18, and so I might be calling because I think I need to figure out, do that program, so I may be giving you a call. And then the second Saturday of the month, the museum continues its children's exploration series, and so if there's something that you need your family to do on the second Saturday of the month, the Sherar History Museum really does have some great programs, so I always want to give a shout-out when they do their quarterly reports and let them know they're doing a great job, so.
I thought it was also a nice report, and they're quite active. I was, always liked to read about collaboration, and I thought the No-Go Gala fundraiser sounded quite interesting, so. Good job.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the quarterly report?
Motion to accept the quarterly report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept item A from the Consent Docket. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, item A is approved. All right. Takes us to item seven, Public Hearings. Receive public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit from Stillwater First United Methodist Church at 400 West 7th Avenue to allow an electronic sign in the O Office District. This is CC-18-48. Mr. McNichol.
Lance Gross from Development Services will provide that report.
Yes, good evening. Lance Gross with Development Services. The specific use permit before you tonight is for the Stillwater United Methodist Church. The subject site is located with the purple boundary, and it's located on the southwest corner of 6th Avenue and Duck Street. The zoning for this location is Office PUD. The zoning to the north of this property is CB Commercial Business, and also to the southeast. The blue area is Zone P Public. To the west is CG Commercial General, and it is also a PUD, and to the south is RT Residential Two Family, and that's a PUD as well. Here's a site plan showing the location of the proposed sign. 6th Avenue is on the north here, Duck is on the east, and the sign is proposed to be located right here. This is an elevation of the proposed sign. You can see the LED sign is located at the top. It's approximately 30 square feet. The center sign is the stationary or fixed sign, and the address will be placed at the bottom. The proposed sign is approximately 12 feet 2 inches in height, and the LED sign is about 35 square feet. The, and that's, that's below what's the minimum or maximum requirement, which would be 40, 40 square feet for the overall sign. This is a view looking to the southwest, and the location of the sign will be approximately right here. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
Counselors, any questions?
It fits in, within all the requirements?
That is correct. Yes, it is.
No.
Okay. Thank you, Lance.
Yes.
This time I'll open the public hearing. We have one speaker sign up to speak, Mr. Roger Goze. Please state your name and address for the record.
Roger Goze, 1120 East Connel. Just on behalf of the church, if you've got any questions, aim to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no one else signed up to speak, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will ask staff to return with recommendations.
Yes, the Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero.
Counselors, comments, discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number CC-18-48. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, item CC-18-48 is approved. I have way too much paper up here. I'm going to come up with a better system for this. All right. Takes us to item eight. Item 8A, General Orders. Proposed changes to the city of Stillwater standards allowing individual private booster pump assemblies as an alternative method of meeting the minimum operating pressure requirements. This is CC-18-50. Mr. McNichol.
Bill Millis of Water Resources will provide that report.
Good evening. Resolution 2018-9, if approved, will modify the city of Stillwater standards to allow individual private booster pump assemblies, I'll call them IPBPA's, as an alternative method of meeting the minimum operating pressure requirements for new water services. When the minimum operating pressure is not available, or if improvements, public improvements are not feasible, an IPBPA can then be used to provide the minimum pressure for the customer. The, the standards modifications includes an acknowledgement by the developer and an agreement with the city, and also a notice so that future home buyers would be made aware of the situation. There were some code changes in 2017 which limited water service connections to locations where the water system can supply the standards-acquired minimum operating pressure, basically 40 PSI. So in some areas, it's not feasible to construct new water lines that can provide the minimum pressure without requiring some kind of major upgrade to, to the, upgrade or enhancements to the existing water system. And also with the same, by the same token, on the extension of the water system, in some scenarios, it could be onerous to make that meet 40 PSI as a requirement for the, for the water main, for the public infrastructure. So what this proposed revision to the standards allows the, the code requirement to be met at the customer's service when it's not met in the main under these conditions. The process we used, we developed, worked with the development community to find additional options for complying with the code that still met the intent of the code, and the Stillwater Home Builders Association's Builders Relations Committee actually proposed the use of private booster pump stations on a customer's private service line. So, you know, staff agreed with that suggestion. We drafted some, the proposed language, the code, the, excuse me, the standards changes, took them back to the BRC, had a couple meetings with BRC, one or two meetings with interested engineers from the development community, took their input, incorporated some, explained in some cases why we thought it should stay as we had drafted, took the final product back to the BRC, had a couple of, you know, really minor comments, we incorporated those, and that's what you have before you in the packet tonight. So staff believes that this option will allow some development to occur that otherwise might not be able to occur, but it'll still meet the intent of providing the minimum operating pressure to our customers, so we recommend, no action at this point, but we recommend approval later of the resolution 2018-9. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counselors?
Sounds like you worked through a problem in a nice way.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. That takes us to item nine, Resolutions. Item A, Resolution CC-2018-6. A resolution of the Stillwater City Council adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2018-19. Mr. Dorman.
That's basically self-explanatory. This is the budget that you've held the hearings on previously, and so with adoption of this resolution, that component of the budget for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year is going to affect on July 1st.
Thank you. Counselors, questions or comments or motions?
Motion to adopt the city budget for 2018, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number CC-2018-6. With a vote of four to zero, resolution dash, number CC-2018-6 is adopted. Item B, Resolution Number CC-2018-7. A resolution of the Stillwater City Council authorizing the sale of Armstrong World Industries, Inc., common stock. Mr. Dorman, could you explain this one and item C as well?
Yes. The city received the stock in Armstrong World Industries and in the Quad Graphics Incorporated entity a few years back as further assurance for payment for utilities while these entities were in bankruptcy. The bankruptcy estate did not have sufficient funds to put up cash deposits to cover going forward with utilities, and so the bankruptcy trustee basically gave the city stock in lieu of doing that. Under the state constitution, the city's really not supposed to hold stock, so divestiture of this will actually take care of that issue, and will also, quite frankly, pay on both of, I believe both of these it pays. Does it on Quad? Okay. On Armstrong, it will be sufficient to actually match the amount of money that we need to make us whole with respect to the Armstrong bankruptcy.
Melissa Reams, Chief Financial Officer. The Armstrong World Industries, we hold 1,350 shares, and it closed this evening at $57.65. So that translates to $77,827. The utility bill that was outstanding was about $49,000 and change, so that is going to satisfy that bill with some money left over. The Quad Graphics, on the other hand, was only 58 shares, and it closed today at $18.85. So that's $1,093. Their bill was $90,000 plus. So we're not going to get clear on that one, but we probably never will with 58 shares of stock from them.
Will the excess money from the Armstrong shares go to?
It'll just go back into the SUA as gain on sale of an asset. We'll satisfy the utility bill and get that off the books, and then the difference goes back as gain on sale of an asset, available to, to be used as the trustee's C-FIT.
And then does the, the remaining balance of Quad Graphics account with us, just remain open as maybe someday they come with a check?
Well, we could, we could do that, or we could write it off as a bad debt, which I don't think we've taken any action on either one of those. We've just kind of set them aside for this point.
I believe the bankruptcy court may have taken care of that for us.
Oh, yeah.
That tends to be the case when they grant some form of compensation in the context of a Chapter 11 or a Chapter 7 proceeding.
So we'll probably just clean the books up and be done with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselors, any questions?
There's no benefit, there's no overall benefit to this loss. I mean...
No, not like there would be for you and I.
Right.
No, huh. Because we, as a municipality, we don't pay income tax, so it's just...
It's just, we just eat that.
We did. The ratepayers did.
Yeah.
A while back.
All right. Further discussion or motion on item B?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2018-7.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on Resolution CC-2018-7. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Resolution CC-2018-7 is approved. That moves us to Resolution CC-2018-8. I think we've discussed it already. Is there a motion or further comment?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt CC-2018-8. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Resolution CC-2018-8 is adopted. Item D, Resolution Number CC-2018-9. A resolution of the city of, of the Stillwater City Council adopting amendments to the design and construction. This is the item that we just spoke about.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Millis. Comments or a motion, Counselors?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2018-9.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number CC-2018-9. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Resolution Number CC-2018-9 is approved. Takes us to item 10, Reports from Officers and Board. Mr. Dorman.
A number of items tonight, sir. Requested executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307b4 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding workers' compensation claims filed by Tommy Miller and Lawrence Lay. It is my opinion that public disclosure of these matters will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process these claims and/or conduct an investigation and/or to prosecute or defend any resulting litigation proceeding in the public interest. Item 3, Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307c10 for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the city of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be disclosed would interfere with the development of products and services and would violate the confidentiality of the business. Finally, request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307c10 to discuss labor negotiations with International Association of Firefighters Local 2095 and Paternal Order of Police Lodge Number 102.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Mr. McNichol.
Yes, sir. You may have noticed construction and road closure signs along Southwestern Road and along 32nd Avenue to Sanger Road. We're installing two miles of water line from the 56th Avenue Water Tower to the Deer Crossing and Woodland Trails developments for the next few months as part of the Water 2040 program to improve water distribution and provide more reliable pressure in the southwest part of Stillwater. Once the project is complete, residents in the area will be connected to a new water distribution zone, which will provide more reliable pressure for many years to come. To learn more about the Water 2040 projects, visit the current projects page on our website, or they can wait until the SUA agenda in just a few moments and hear a update on the entire project.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors?
I do have a reminder to stay aware of weather during the severe weather time. We, we use the Be Informed Stillwater Emergency Alert System to send you information during severe weather, natural disasters, and other serious situations. You can sign up or update your Be Informed Stillwater account by going to the city website, click on Emergency Alerts tab under Online Services. You can also follow Stillwater Emergency Management Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, social media accounts. Go to our website's news page for more tips to keep in mind when preparing for severe weather. We had a really nice emergency video series that Rob Hill did last year, I think, and that's probably up there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Counselor Zanotti?
Yes, we'd like to welcome the following individuals who recently joined the city of Stillwater team. Jordan Philpott, he's an entry maintenance, maintenance worker for the Operations Department; James Beal, equipment operator for the Waste Management Department; Gage McCartney, Stillwater Fire Department recruit; and Seth Davis, Stillwater Fire Department recruit. So welcome to the city of Stillwater.
Thank you. Counselor Wedlock?
Thank you, sir. The city is helping students move out of town for the summer with a free drop-offs for electronics and bulk items at the Convenience Collection Center located at 807 South Perkins Road. The OSU Student Move-Out Special lasts from May 1st until June 30th. Students must present a valid OSU student ID to participate, and the following items will be accepted: furniture, appliances, without free-on. the following items will be accepted: furniture, appliances without freon, mattresses, computers, televisions, and stereos. So an excellent opportunity to offload all those computers you don't need till next semester.
Thank you, Counselor Wedlake. I will note that the American Public Power Association recently announced the Reliable Public Power Providers list for 2018, and the Stillwater Electric Utility has earned a platinum designation. Stillwater is one of only 254 municipalities, that's, I think, in the country, correct? Somebody knows that? 254 municipal electric utilities in the country that hold this designation. We first received a designation three years ago with a gold rating, and this year our rating was upgraded to platinum. Stillwater Electric Utility and Edmund Electric are the only two utilities in Oklahoma designated as reliable public power providers, both at the platinum level. That's a really cool recognition for the Utilities Authority and the electric utility to earn, and we certainly appreciate all their hard work in keeping the lights on in Stillwater. All right. That's going to take us down to item 12, Appointments. We'll start with the Library Board. There are two terms expiring with current members Robin Cornwell and Kathy Albright, who have both indicated their willingness to continue to serve, and I think, as we know from service on public boards, for folks who understand how it's going and are willing to continue to serve, that's always a positive thing, so I would like to nominate both Robin Cornwell and Kathy Albright to new terms, to additional terms on the Library Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to renew the terms of these two Library Board members. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Robin Cornwell and Kathy Albright are appointed to new terms on the Library Board. Thank you for your service. All right. Item B, Stillwater Regional Airport Authority. We have a few, we have one current vacancy and a couple expiring terms that we need to talk about. We do have one member, Chuck Fleischer, whose term has expired, and he has indicated a willingness to be reappointed, and again, I think that's a good thing. We have one vacancy and a number of applicants. What I would like to do at this time is nominate Mr. Fleischer to a new term on the board and nominate Joe Weaver to take the vacant spot on the board at this point, and then the two other spots that are not going to be reappointed, we'd like to look at the number of applicants we've received, and it takes a little bit more time to find the right folks for those two positions. So at this point, I would like to nominate Chuck Fleischer and Joe Weaver to those two spots on the Airport Authority Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to nominate Chuck Fleischer and Joe Weaver to the Airport Authority Board. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, those two nominations are approved. That takes us to item C, Discuss Process for Appointment to Fill the Unexpired Term of Council Seat Number One. I wanted to chat about this at the meeting a little bit to sort of let everyone know. We did open up applications. They were open through the end of April. We received 14 total applications. Mr. Dorman, do we know how many were fully vetted in terms of residency requirements and that sort of thing?
I believe that there are two, possibly three, that don't meet the residency and/or registration requirements, but otherwise, the rest of them did meet those qualifications.
Okay, so there may be a couple there that either don't live in Stillwater or haven't been registered to vote in Stillwater long enough.
You have to be registered in Stillwater six months prior to taking office, and you also have to be a resident for six months prior to taking office, and we have some that are registered here but not living here, and one that's the opposite, so that was the issue. We're still resolving that with the Election Board.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the process, I don't know about you all. I assume you all have received a number of emails, like I have, from interested citizens advocating on behalf of one or another of the applicants. I'd like to hear comment if you all have on the process. Would I, I think personally feel like we should take that input from the citizens. This is an elected position, really. It's not really, I mean, we choose because we don't want to run another special election right now, but I'm really most interested in who the people of Stillwater feel is the best applicant for the position, so I'd like to take the next week to hear that input, and then for us to come in next week at our meeting and have this as an agenda item for potential nomination of one of those applicants, but I'm interested to hear if you all have comments or thoughts on what the process should include.
So just to clarify, Will, that would be different than we've done before?
Yeah. So Elaine and I were both here the last time we did this, when the applicants were asked to come present and answer questions before the board. I didn't personally feel like it necessarily added a whole lot to the process. You know, these are folks who we can talk to, or if they come to us and want to talk about the position, and again, that input from other people outside the community, to me, is probably more valuable than my assessment of them at the podium, and so I don't know that, and with 14 applicants, you know, that's a whole meeting, really, of doing the interviews, and my thought on it is that we can get the input we need and be able to make an informed decision without having that presentation made.
I agree. It's a little less awkward. That was a, you know, I appreciate everyone that has emailed about those applicants that have submitted their names. I think that the community input really does add some value to those that have.
Well, yeah, I would just add to that, you know, going on the public input side of things, you know, next week, we're going to talk about this and really come, get down to the nuts and bolts of it, to show up for public hearing, because I mean, I think, you know, in the vein of hearing what the public wants and who the public thinks would best serve them, come to the meeting and voice those recommendations and why you feel that way. I still have emails myself that I will get back to this week at some point, but the input on this, just from an email standpoint, has been pretty robust, and so I think that voicing those recommendations at a public hearing would go a long way, so.
So we would have a public hearing? People would come?
I think, I don't know that we'd have a specific public hearing. They could come speak under item five, public comment on agenda is not scheduled for public hearing.
Right.
For folks who wanted to come, express their opinion, one way or the other, or they can send the email, or they can call us and let us know ahead of time what they feel is, who they feel is the best choice.
I mean, if we have a public hearing, that could be the same as having 14 people give a two-minute presentation.
Well, my thought on that is, is that I've had, I've had many, many emails regarding a few people, a few recommendations. So, you know, I don't think that it would be all 14 people that would be, you know, having recommendations at a public hearing, but if you feel strongly about a certain candidate, I would urge you to come and speak at the public hearing and voice to us why, why you support a certain candidate over another.
And the opportunity to speak at the hearing on an item that's on the agenda is always going to be there.
Right.
So, you know, the people will have that opportunity. I'm open to...
I think email or phone calls are just as powerful.
Sure.
And, I mean, I hate to put a burden on the applicants, although it's not huge, but to round up, you know, 100 people to come here, it just...
If you can round up 100 people, that really, really solidifies your case.
Well, I know that the applicants too, I hope they know that if they want to reach out to any of us, we're also willing to answer questions, because it's one thing to fill out an application, but sometimes when you do that, then all of a sudden you have questions that come up, or something, but we are all each willing to have that conversation.
I was really excited to see that number of applications and the thought that went into the applications. I'm glad I'm already here.
And it's going to be a difficult decision for us as a board, I think, because there are a number of very qualified folks that have applied, and so I think it will be helpful to see public input, to continue to receive public input by email, by call. If people do want to come to the meeting and make their choice known, that would be helpful, too, but I think we can come in next meeting with an agenda item for action and make our decision, or at least attempt to make our decision at that point. So that would be the plan for next week, unless there are other comments. All right. At this point, I would like to recess the Stillwater City Council meeting, and before we move to executive session, and move on to the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. All right. I will call the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for May 7, 2018, to order. Counselors, comments or questions about the consent docket? Or a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved. I think I just called you Counselors instead of Trustees. Everybody just ignore that.
Nellin boy.
Your Trustees. That takes us to item 5A, Water 2040 Update and Authorization for New Finished Water Pump Station Project, SUA-18-15. Mr. McNichol?
Bill Millis from Water Resources will provide the update.
Thank you, sir. This evening, I wanted to give you an update on Water 2040 and discuss the finished water pump station project at the water treatment plant, which is, that's one of the Water 2040 projects. And Water 2040 was initiated to correct distribution issues in southwest Stillwater and to allow for growth in southwest Stillwater through the year 2040. Kind of giving a brief overview, because I know some of the audience may not have been here through the whole project, so I don't want to assume everybody knows as much as I do about the program. And this list, I just, sure, it was used to develop and convey the original implementation plan and then the subsequent implementation plan since then, and the key takeaway here is the 16 projects divided into three funding packages, so that list kind of gives us a framework to, a consistent framework throughout the program to talk about the progress and the current status. And this map...
Maybe Eric, could you set up these other two maps?
It's also on your, in front of you on a 11-by-17 sheet, which will be, excuse me, easier to see, and the map won't be up there as we go along. But this just shows the geographic distribution of the projects, and before going into the current status, I just wanted to briefly mention the real estate acquisition was, you know, a really big part of this project. 150 total parcels were required, and we have had no condemnations, and only one parcel remains to be acquired. So that's, I think that's really good news. Now, as far as, I'll go through the projects, there's 16 of them, so I'll go through pretty quickly to try to respect your time, but please do stop me if you have questions. Be glad to try to answer them. So this, number one, is the West 51 Booster Pump Station, which is complete, and here's a shot of the interior, the pumps and the electrical control room. Project two, which also is complete, is two miles of 24-inch water line. What's important in these two photos, it's taken from the same perspective, but you can see the restoration also on this photo from the same location. You can see the level of care that we expected and achieved from our contractor, because what, you know, one of the most important things to us is how we treat our customers. We're, we know that construction is a mess while it's happening. We want to restore it at least as good as it was before we got there, as well as minimizing the disruption. Here's project three and four, which is two elevated storage towers. You see there on the right, the footing going in, and then the completed tower, not completed, the erected tower on the left. Here's the other one. While both of them look now like they're complete, there's still a bit of work going on, piping in the interior and setting up controls and things like that. So these projects, the two of them, are about 80% complete. Project five, two miles of 12-inch water line, and it's about, it goes from 19th and Range to what I just showed you, the twin towers, where one of the new towers is. It's about 70% complete and still under construction right now. Project six, another pump station, which is associated with that water line, and it too is about 70% complete. These first six make up Package A, which was the first loan we acquired from the state, from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, and now here's, projects eight and nine were binned together. They are about 50% complete and make up two and a quarter miles of 18-inch water line. That's the project, I think, that Mr. McNichol so eloquently told us about earlier on the city council agenda, that there's traffic control, potential for daily shutdowns, so if you can avoid that area, it's probably better to, but along western, 44th to 32nd and along 32nd, and then even north on Sanger for a quarter mile. So I'll stop there at nine and summarize. Projects three through nine are the ones that are under construction right now, and all of those, we anticipate being complete before Christmas of this year. Projects 10, 11, and 12 are under design and real estate acquisition right now. Those projects include two and a half miles of 18-inch water line and another pump station. This pump station will be on 32nd Avenue, about a quarter mile east of western. Project 13 is demolition. Some of the facilities we're demolishing as we go, if it makes sense, but the bulk of the demolition is going to be rolled into a more economical single package, occurring when the other facilities are in place and operational. Package C is to be reevaluated in the year 2020. It was, our original directive was to get the whole Water 2040 program done as quickly as we could. We identified later that the Package C could be deferred, so what we're going to do is wait till 2020 and build it closer to when the actual need is there, but it's a very big piece, $45 million total, and it includes seven miles of a parallel 36-inch pipeline from the water treatment plant to roughly Sixth and Pioneer. At this point, I would, do want to give you the chance to ask questions here. Otherwise, I'm going to go ahead and change our focus a little bit.
Where were projects 14 and 15?
14 and 15, roughly 44th from the new 44th Tower, and then along 44th to Sanger.
Are the, which package are they in?
C.
Okay, those are all...
So those are all deferred, and at that time, we may find that we don't need them for another few years. We may find that, you know, our needs have changed, we modify them somewhat. But I wanted now to transition to a discussion of the finished water pump station at the water treatment plant, but as I do, I wanted to take a chance to thank my staff, and also CH2M, Lars Osterwald is here with CH2M tonight, but to thank all them for literally years of hard work, all the preparatory work to bring the program to the significant level of construction activity that we can see going on right now. This, the existing water, finished water pump station, it pumps all the water, all the water to all our customers, goes through this pump station, so it is a very critical piece of our water infrastructure. You can see these photos with the piping and then the control room on the right, that it's crowded and it's showing its age. Our original plan was to rehab the pump station based on a temporary bypass pumping system, so that we could do work in there while having the bypass pumping going on to minimize interruptions in service and minimize the risk of, you know, tearing something apart and then not being able to go back together, or things not working quite right. But after a detailed investigation, CH2M came to the conclusion that a temporary bypass was not feasible. Basically, it could not be done in a reasonable timeframe and meet DEQ requirements. Basically, it could not be done in a reasonable timeframe and meet DEQ requirements as far as water quality and protection of the safety of the drinking water. So at that point, proceeding with the rehab plan without a temporary bypass in place is very risky to proceed there, and we honestly did not feel comfortable doing that. So what we asked CH to do at that point was to review our options, and we kind of stepped back from, you know, just rehabbing the pump station to a more comprehensive view of the water treatment plant needs, both current, not just Water 2040, but all our current needs and foreseeable future needs. And the benefits were clearly too good to pass up. You know, the risk is decreased hugely, the long-term cost savings were on the order of $9 million. It's going to cost more now, but over the long term, it'll be 9 million, estimated 9 million in savings. And I think I just realized that I didn't tell you about, enough about that option. That option includes an entire new pump station. Rather than trying to rehab and fit things in the existing pump station, what we, the alternative, the way identified as the best and the one I'm recommending tonight, is to build a new, an entire new building at this location, south in the open area, south of the existing pump station. The cost of the new pump station would be, and it's in your report, $15.1 million, including design, construction, inspection, and testing. The current rehab project was bid, and that estimate, what an estimate, it was an as-bid number of 3.2 million, so that'll partially offset the 15.1. But the 15.1 is the total cost to move forward from this point and design and build a new pump station. An additional loan would be required for this. The capacity of loans, Packages A and B, is not enough to accommodate that. So our plan would be to work with the OWRB and with the DEQ to develop a third loan package. We're not asking for loan authorization at this time or any construction authorization. We would come back and discuss that when we're, when we have more details and we're closer to being ready to execute. This slide here kind of illustrates why we need to go for an additional loan for the water treatment plant. I shared this one with you during our discussion on asset management last fall, and it depicts Black and Beach's ongoing assessment, assessment, excuse me, of the water treatment plant needs. And you can see bottom line there is 23 and a half million of, in construction cost of necessary improvements at the water plant. So Black and Beach is, they're still working on developing the scope and costs, complete costs for this effort, but in the near future, we'll come back and discuss that again. But now that, knowing that that's on the horizon and knowing the magnitude of other capital work that we have going on, you know, fitting an extra 15 million approximately into our, into the balance of the water fund, the available balance, you know, all those big pieces don't fit. So that's, that's why we believe we need to extend the Water 2040 loan program to cover the pump, pump station. This slide is to, I started to say remind you, but I don't know if any of you are here in 2015, but that was when the trustees last adopted a rate plan for water and sewer rates, and that, it was a three-year rate plan, so it's, so it's come to its end in 2018. And it also is good to tie it together with thinking very generally about, you know, all the upcoming expenses we have. A cost-to-service study estimates all the costs that go into providing the service, from replacing infrastructure to the personnel and staffing to all the, every cost that goes into finding water and sewer, and then it develops and establishes a rate plan to recover those costs, because the SUA is a cost-to-service entity on both the water and sewer. Each of them is an independent enterprise, so to speak, so the water rates cover all the costs of the water system, and the sewer rates cover all the costs of the sewer system. So, you know, as things change, both for these loans, both for the population projections and the water demand projections that were made in 2015, we believe that it's approaching the time to review and update the cost-to-service study. And so staff plans to bring that back to you sometime this calendar year and initiate an update of the cost-to-service study. So I think, apologize for those tangents off of the issue at hand, but I think they're worthwhile and help, help inform, you know, where we're going longer term. But specifically tonight, you know, I did want to update on Water 2040, but specifically what I look to do is request that you modify the implementation plan of Water 2040 to incorporate the revised Project 7, a new pump station, authorize $15.1 million for that project, authorize staff to proceed with the design, and for staff to execute a professional services agreement with CH2M for, in the amount of roughly 2.6 million. I tried not to go on too long, so hopefully I didn't go too fast, but I'd be glad to try to, try to answer questions.
Bill, you said the 15.1 million wouldn't cover, obviously, the whole cost of doing Project 7. Do you have any estimate of...
No, the 15 does cover, yes. That's our estimate of the cost to do, to build a new finished water pump station on the plant grounds.
So the additional that you're needing then, for the improvements, is that...
Well, we would need the, yeah, maybe I wasn't clear on that. The 15.1, we would need a loan from OWRB to cover that, because there's not adequate funds in the Package A and B loans.
That would cover the entire...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That would cover the entire pump station project.
Okay.
So, so Bill, what is the 23.5 millions in total improvements of the water treatment plant on...
That's unrelated to Water 2040.
Okay, so that's just, that's just...
Yeah. We had two consultants working at the water plant, you know, on different things. What Black and Beach did was an assessment of all our system, chemical systems, treatment systems, and so they're developing that independently from Water 2040.
I see.
Yeah, so those, the 15 and the 23.5 are completely separate. And I'm not trying to time together...
You there too?
Yeah, just to use, to give you the bigger picture of our future needs...
I see, okay.
...in total at the, at the treatment plant.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, how long would you estimate that if, that without the pump, with just the refurbishing of the, of the current infrastructure, how long would that take?
The construction?
Well, the, the, instead of building a new pump, how long would it take to refurb the existing infrastructure?
Oh, if we proceeded with that?
Yeah. Not saying that that's the best option here, I'm just curious.
Okay, let me see, what was our construction duration?
Six months of construction, the challenge became the bypass pumping.
Yeah, it was six months of construction, but a lot of risks involved in that, a lot of turning the whole water plant off, turning it back on...
Yeah.
And hoping that you get all the work done inside the window before people run out of water.
Got you, okay.
We do have, if you'll bear with me on one more aside, you know, OSU and the city, we have an agreement to, to serve each other in times of need, and that's in place, and we've backed them up, and they've backed us up, but it doesn't eliminate the risk, and it doesn't, it doesn't, they can't easily serve our entire system.
Mm-hmm, that's, that's very insightful, Bill, that's kind of what I was getting at. All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I hate to belabor this question, but on the picture with the map, there are 16 projects listed.
Yes, ma'am.
Number 7 is water treatment plant pump upgrades. And upcoming water treatment plant improvements is the 23 million.
Yes.
That's already included in Water 2040.
That will not be included, no ma'am. Number 7...
Rock that out.
Number 7 on this list and on the map, it's not up there now, but that was, that was the water treatment plant upgrades...
To put the...
For the rehab, for roughly three or four million. And then what we're proposing to do is modify that number 7 project for the 15 million complete new finished water pump station.
So Project 7 was originally to refurbish the pump, the finished pump station?
Yeah, just one part...
Which is, just takes the clean water that the treatment plant has treated and pumps it into the system?
Yes, sir.
And all this other stuff, the 23 million, is all behind that pump?
Right, that's all the stuff to get the treated water ready to be pumped out.
And none of this was included in 2040? This 23 million dollars is not anywhere on this list of projects?
Correct.
Okay. So, the original 7, number 7, was just for 3.2 million dollars to refurbish the pump system, but we're now, we're looking at it saying, we can't really refurbish it the way we thought we could, we're just going to have to build a new one?
Yes, sir.
And then we're still going to have to spend this 23 million dollars sometime in the future to upgrade the plant behind the pump?
Yes.
Plus build a new one.
Well, the, the new pump station will be covered by the 15 million dollars that we're asking to authorize this evening.
Okay.
With an estimated overall net savings of $9 million.
Right, what we looked at there was other things that we need to replace the Yost pump station, and it'll be on the pump, water plant grounds. We'll need, within the next five to 10 years, to replace the Northeast Zone pumps, which are in the same building. And by the time we, you know, we make all those improvements, that building may be falling down around us by that point.
Yeah.
So all that, all that went into the, you know, the long-term vision, which, which ends up in 9 million worth of savings.
Yep.
And, and this is complicated, so I apologize for not, you know, clarifying and simplifying enough, so, I mean, keep asking if it's not clear yet.
I think I have it.
Okay, thank you.
When you talk about the Water 2040 loans, the payback on those loans is coming out of the rates we collect?
Yes, sir.
Correct? And the, and the rate study from 2015 is structured to pay back those loans, right?
Yes, that accommodated the loans. Perhaps not the exact numbers, but estimates of what they would be.
And so when, if we do a new rate cost-of-service study and look at what our rates are going to be in the future, we're going to have to take into account the loans that we've got to pay off this infrastructure, and I assume future loans on the 23 million dollars for the water treatment plant upgrades. That will all go into that new cost-of-service study?
Exactly, if necessary, yeah. If we can't cover the 23.0 million from, you know, the available water fund, then we may have to consider loans.
So seeking this additional 15 million dollars in loans for the 2040 project doesn't necessarily affect our rates right away?
Correct.
But we, we're going to have to look at those and see if we need to adjust them in the future?
Yes.
Trustees, other questions? I feel like I had one more, but I can't remember what it was right now.
So just one last one, Bill. So with a new rate structure, when that study is done, are we going to look further into the future than three years on this new study? Or is, are they just automatically done at every three years?
No, we certainly can. At the, at the last study in 2015, staff presented options of doing a five-year plan or a three-year plan, and counsel at that time or trustees chose to go with the three-year plan.
Okay.
You could plan, I think, it seems like what they told us at the time was, was look at 10 years, but don't be putting that in stone, you know, just look at your 10 years and then develop a five-year plan, and then, when you get close to five, look at the next five. But at that point, given the dynamics of Water 2040, I think that made the trustees say, well, let's not guess or project so quite so far into the future.
Sure, okay.
So I have two more, if anybody else wants to go. It sounds like if we don't want to spend the money on a new pump station at this point, we're going to have to just try to go forward with the existing plan and deal with the fact that we may not be able to, you know, I assume, it sounds like what happens if we shut down the station, try to do the repairs, don't get them done in time, then, you know, potentially we have large-scale water interruptions. I guess the question is, tell me more about the risks that are inherent with moving forward with the existing plan.
Sure, well, that's, that's the main risk, because you're taking, you know, taking equipment out of service, and then, and anytime you do that, besides the risk that you're taking it out of service, so you're stopping, potentially at some point having to stop treatment, and so ramping the treatment train back up and, you know, getting the chemistry balance right, but also that the, that the work may take longer than you predict, you know, you can estimate it, but it may take longer, or you're working on an existing, it's kind of like doing, you know, trying to do an overhaul on your car while you're still driving. Let's just put it in neutral for a minute and do some work real quick, and then we'll put it back in gear. We've got to keep, keep driving. So knowing that how things will go, you know, the new parts don't fit like you thought they would, even, even if you've measured three times, things don't quite fit back together, or you shut down the pumping and you make changes, and then things won't start back up, because, just either mechanically with a pump, or the electronics and the electrical system, the control system, all those systems are, you know, some of them are aged and may have some glitches that we haven't identified, so there's, you know, I couldn't put a number to the risk, but there's, there's significant risk that things are not going to go right, especially when we have to do this not once or twice, but half a dozen times. And some of these shutdowns, we've got OSU that can back us up, but not on all of them.
So originally, the plan was to use bypass pumps, and those became infeasible, or we decided they were infeasible. Can you tell us more about why what we hoped was going to happen turned out to not be able to happen?
Sure, it depended on, by bypass pumping, some contractor would set up probably outside the existing pump station in, out in the yard, a skid with temporary pumps on it, and then they'd run piping into our, and tie into our piping on both sides of our existing pump station. So there's an outage while they connect that, but then you're running on the temporary pumps for the duration of the project for three to six months. The, the real hurdle there was all the pumps and piping, specifically the pumps, meeting National Sanitation Foundation standards, which is a national standard for protecting the safety of the water system. We, no company, we could not find a company that can provide that off the shelf. Companies, like we found one or maybe two nationally that said, well, we could do that, but it would take us at least a couple of years to build a pump that meets that, meets that standard. And, and we don't want to not meet that standard, and the state wouldn't allow us to not meet that standard. And maybe when what we found out through this process, if it's happening, well, I mean, we thought surely this is happening in other cities, how do they do it? And what we found out is, well, either they're not telling the state, or they're not doing it. Then most people are just building a new pump station or a new portion of a pump station and then switching over.
My water engineering credentials are not really where I wish they were, but it seems like a pretty critical piece of equipment to, to only have one of them, to not have a redundancy, or, I mean, what happens if this pump breaks generally? I mean, is...
Well, it's, right now, there's redundancy built into it. It has, kind of like, this pump, this is the pump station, but it's similar, well... Hey, you can't tell there, but you see the blue pipe going across the middle of the screen? Above it, there's a bank of four pumps, and so there is some redundancy built in. So we have four pumps that pump to the central zone, the main part of downtown, and then we have a bank of three pumps that pump to the northeast zone. So there is redundancy built in, so one pump dies, but over time, as your demand increases, your redundancy is kind of grown out of. So, for example, now, if one of those pumps went down, most of the year, we'd probably have enough redundancy to be okay, but in this, if one goes down, you know, in July... have enough redundancy to be okay, but in this, if, if one goes down, you know, in July on the peak day, we, we could still pump water, but maybe not keep, quite keep up. So, there is, there is redundancy built in, and, and that's what's, honestly, what's driving a lot of Water 2040. You know, we've got, we used to have serving the southwest part of Stillwater from the water plant, one pipeline, one pump station, one water tank. Now, we've set it up, so we have the two or three water tanks serving different parts of Stillwater, but they're piped, and the pump stations are set up so that if one goes down, when one goes down, because it's gonna happen someday, that the other ones can help pick up the load, you know, maybe not seamlessly, without anybody noticing, but we'll at least be able to get by. So, we're building redundancy into Water 2040. That's one of the, you know, key benefits of what we're doing here is, is building the resiliency and the redundancy and the, and the robustness of the water distribution system. And so, that's what we want to do.
Yeah.
Use that same mindset at the treatment plant.
Thank you.
This is kind of what happened last summer. We had something go down that didn't mix things correctly, and we did rely on OSU at that time?
Last spring, when the, when the ammonia system went down, we did not, excuse me. In that instance, we did not rely on OSU.
Oh.
What we did there was we switched our disinfectant. We hadn't, we were able to switch from chloramines, which is chlorine and ammonia, to just free chlorine. It was, again, not a painless switch, but we were able to switch and did not have to utilize OSU at that point. We have it other times, and we will shortly. The central zone tower on McElroy, right next to OSU's tower, when we connect that to our 36-inch water line, OSU is gonna back up the central zone, and so they'll be pumping water into our central zone and serving, serving us during the, for the day of that, that operation.
Bill, I've got one last question. So, if, if we do go ahead and approve this, and we build a new pump out at the water treatment plant, what happens to the old pumps? Are we gonna continue to utilize those as a backup, or do we sell those? I mean, what happens to those?
Well, the, no, the, we, we could keep the pumps as spares and backups. Generally speaking, that equipment is not worth much, you know, it's, it's, outlived its useful life. So, the piping would probably be sold for scrap. We'll have enough redundancy built into the new pump station that I don't see much value in keeping this one online, just because the maintenance costs are gonna be high, so we'd probably end up scrapping a lot of it. Some, there, we always look for opportunities to salvage, but in this case, keeping it as a backup is, is not, not really feasible. It'll, it'll, it'll make some space available inside that building that maybe we find other uses for, maybe we save some money on the Black and Beach project by, instead of having to build a new building potentially. You know, it's not a given, but we might be able to reuse the space.
Okay.
I think trustee Wedlake wants to use it at his swimming pool.
I'm signing off.
Trustees, any further questions?
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have an item for vote on this? Yes.
Well, I mean, it is kind of, if it is kind of broad, but it does say for new finished water pump station. And we will have to bring back the documents that would authorize that, along with any, if we go out for additional funding, we'll have to do that as well, so this is just to get the process moving.
Well, but it also authorizes a professional services agreement with CH2M for the design, construction services for the project.
That, that actually did bring up another question. Is that 2.5 million included in the 15.1?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a report, and we have recommendations from staff. Any further questions or a motion from the trustees?
Motion to accept the staff recommendation on, staff recommendations.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept staff recommendations, including authorizing staff to proceed with the design of the new FWPS and executive professional services contract with C2HM, CH2M, in an amount not to exceed 2.5 million, 2.56, I don't have to read all that. 2.576 million. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, staff recommendations are approved. All right, that takes us to item 5B, designation of surplus funds in fiscal year 2019 general fund transfer, SUA-18-16. Mr. McNichol?
Our CFO, Melissa Reames, will provide that report.
Good evening, trustees. Melissa Reames, Chief Financial Officer. I'm here this evening to ask you to approve the transfer out of the SUA and into the general fund for fiscal year 19. And if I can get to my report here, we'll kind of walk you through it. So, back in fiscal 2016, the, this, the board of trustees adopted a general fund transfer policy, and it's a policy that provides guidelines for how you effectively adopt a transfer out of the SUA surplus revenue into the general fund to fund any of our programming that's not covered by sales and use tax that we collect in the general fund. And that document was SUA Resolution 2016-5. So, this evening, the, the report that you have is pretty high-level, but it is explaining and giving you numbers that we are asking for transfer to fund the activities in fiscal year 2019. To date, our estimate is that with the operating revenue at the end of fiscal 18, and with the surplus revenue that is sitting in the SUA fund right now, we estimate that those totals will be 22,595. These funds are generated strictly through the electric utility and through the waste management utility. Those are the things that are available. We are asking in fiscal 19 for you to approve a transfer of 12,376,556 out of the SUA and into the general fund, and that's a not-to-exceed cap. So, if we needed additional funds, we would come back to you, and, and you would have to make that an affirmative approval at that point in time. If we don't need that much money, we won't take it. We only take into the general fund what we need to complete our operations for that year. I gave you a five-year history there at the bottom of the first page of your report, and you can see since 2015, that transfer has decreased over the last few years. It kind of rose to an apex, and then now it's dropping off again. And I, that is in large part, and I think city manager McNichol will agree with me, the steadfastness of our employees to really be good stewards of the resources that they've been given. Some of it also is due to our management team really watching positions and, and making good hiring decisions along those lines. So, what I am recommending to you this evening and asking for your affirmative approval is to approve that transfer out of the SUA into the general fund for approximately 12.4 million dollars for fiscal 19. Questions?
I would also like to thank, or mention that having the policy was a big step.
Absolutely, and it, and I, I wasn't here for a lot of these years, but what, it did seem to me, the first year that I worked on the budget, was that we kind of had our cart before our horse, and so we prepared the general fund budget, and we'd just kind of pop in a number there to make it work. And this way, the, the SUA, we are calculating what we think they are going to, what revenue they're gonna have available, and then we're making that affirmative action and putting that into the general fund and making it work in the general fund, kind of as opposed to just forcing it through there. Yeah, yeah, so. I, I like this approach much, much better, more transparent, definitely.
Just to clarify the numbers, the 12.032 million is, is the amount we're expecting in surplus from the SUA this year?
Actually, that is in fiscal 19.
That's 19?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the idea here, though, is that we're not taking more out than we're actually putting in?
That's what we're trying to do, yes.
So, we're not depleting the existing fund balance?
Right. And if you'll remember, the structure, especially in the electric utility, is such that it has money going into its electric rate stabilization fund, so it does have designated funds going over there to provide for fluctuations in rates and for any of these big capital projects that need to be funded. So, it is secure, but we don't ever want to put the utility in a position where it's not, where it can't be fully funded and it can't operate. So, that's why we go through the process that we go through in the beginning.
That, again, just to be clear, the rate stabilization, stabilization fund is separate from...
Correct. It is not included in these numbers. It is, it is a designated fund, and it is stated separately. These are undesignated funds and unrestricted.
Trustees, further questions or motions?
Motion to accept staff recommendation to transfer 12,376,556 to the fiscal year 19 general budget fund.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, SUA-18-16 is approved.
Thank you, trustees.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to resolutions. Item 6A, resolution number 2018-2, a resolution of the Stillwater Utilities Authority adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2018-19. Trustees? Well, this is our budget for the year.
Right, this is your budget. The other point I would make is that there is also, what you just did is memorialized within this resolution as well, so you're covered on both ends, so to speak, with respect to make, authorizing that transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Trustees, questions or motions?
Motion to adopt resolution number 2018-2.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt resolution number 2018-2. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, resolution 2018-2 is approved. Reports from officers and boards, Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. McNichol?
No items, sir.
Trustees?
No.
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is adjourned. Lots of paper. All right, that takes us to the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for May 7, 2018. I'll call the meeting to order.
Excuse me.
Counsel, trustees, consent docket, questions or motions?
Motion to approve consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved. It takes us to item 5, resolutions. Resolution number SEDA-18-01, a resolution of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2018-19. This is our budget for the year. Trustees, any comments, questions, or motions?
Motion to adopt resolution number, the budget.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number SEDA-18-1. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, resolution number SEDA-18-01 is approved. Reports from officers and boards, Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. McNichol?
No items, sir.
Trustees? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting is adjourned. I will now reconvene the Stillwater City...
Meeting.
I'm sorry?
Stillwater Public Works Authority.
Oh. Forgot that one.
All of these, all of these meetings to get the budgets in place, I was just, sorry.
A lot of paper I have here. The, I will call to order the Stillwater Public Works Authority meeting for May 7, 2018. Trustees, on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us to resolution number SPWA-18-01, a resolution of the Stillwater Public Works Authority adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2018-19.
Motion to adopt the budget resolution.
May I ask questions?
Please.
I'm happy to approve this, however, in the last several years, every time we do this, we say, why do we have this?
We, I think Melissa probably is better explaining this than I am, but there are still some funds that remain in the Stillwater Public Works Authority.
And, and probably more key to its reason to exist is that it also secures some loans that we have through Oklahoma Department of Commerce, and those loans are provided for the building out there at the Oklahoma Technology Park, the FLIR, it's, it's the FLIR building at this point. And so, until those notes are paid off, this, this entity needs to stay in place and stay active.
Okay, it's the first time I've gotten an explanation. Oh, thank you.
Glad you asked the question.
That's it. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Second, that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number SPWA-18-01. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, resolution SPWA-18-01 is approved. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Public Works Authority meeting. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, we are adjourned. I will now reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Motion for executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, we'll now enter executive session.